Good evening, six thirty P M. August thirteenth, twenty twenty five, I'll call the select board regular business meeting to order. If you're able to stand and join us with the pledge.
Please, my agents to the flag of the United States of America and cheer the Republic for what we do. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, would everyone silence their cell phones? Is anyone planning on recording this meeting? Oh, one good. Meeting is being broadcast live on T C T V cable station eight and on the YouTube web platform. It'll also be being recorded by camera due to zoom zoomers. First item on the agenda approval of meeting minutes for January seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, January twenty third, twenty twenty five, January, July, excuse me.
You want snow.
That's the snow, yeah.
Yeah, zilmes and July thirtieth, twenty twenty five. There any? Board's pleasure if you wish to make do them all at once or when it comes.
Move to per the minutes of July seventeenth, twenty twenty five, July twenty third, twenty twenty five, and July thirtieth, twenty twenty five as presented.
Second.
This chair. This vessel seconded by Mr. Toth. Any discussion estimate?
Yes, I have a correction on page, no page numbers, but it's a seven of old business in the last set of meeting minutes. This discussion on the housing in the school. It says a number of ages, including a table, it should be pages. It's seven right here, number of ages. It should be pages. Well, that, I'm good.
As the health and issues.
Take that as a friendly amendment.
Grace, any issues?
Nope.
Would you be amend the motion correction?
I would like to amend that motion with the correction.
Second as well.
Yep, alright.
On the motion to accept the meeting minutes, July seventeenth, July twenty third, July thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
No.
Espaso?
Yes.
And I am yes. And six thirty five P M. We have an executive session minutes. We have citizen input. One, two. Mr. Pope?
Liz Toth, so I already gave everybody a copy of a letter that a response to a records request that I had made and and specifically it was in regards to American Express bills. I had kind of cherry picked some off of it because over the year the town has spent over eighty five thousand dollars through American Express. And so I understand that there, you know, that the records officer is allowed to be able to charge me for it. I am doing this as part of the advisory committee and the fact that I'm doing prep work before it gets to the advisory committee. So that way we can make, you know, efficient use of our time. And she was charging me nineteen dollars seventy five cents. So here I am volunteering, I'm spending lots of hours of my own time looking through the the financial the finances of the town. And ba- basically I was told that if I didn't want to get charged, that I had to have it in the meeting minutes before she she would consider it that way, otherwise records request was gonna, I was gonna get charged every time. So I realize you can't talk about it, I am just making the select board aware. The, okay, the the second thing is I know later on in the meeting, there is an update from the police department. And in it, you know, they're looking for basically a two, they're suggesting a two and a half over. And I just want to point out to the board in case it missed anyone's attention, that in the past six weeks, they have not filed anything in the T T A's report. If there isn't anything in the report, my personal opinion, as a taxpayer, they did nothing. I know that's not accurate, they of course did all sorts of things, they they need to be basically tooting their horns, saying everything they did for through every week to week. They're they're like every other department, they need to be doing that. There are other departments that have also at times not filed a report on a weekly basis, it's just the last report from the police department was April twenty, April twenty fourth. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Mister Chairman, members of the board, I want to thank you for your work you're doing in the search of the town administrator, and it's a lot of work and I commend what you're doing for the town of Templeton. I'm actually here to discuss a we have this policy or procedure that we have in the office, at least when I was here, I'm not sure if things change where they're picking and choosing what co pays get reimbursed and which ones don't. But the fact of the matter is employees that are eligible under this procedure. And what happens is if they have a day surgery, they could submit the the copay to the town of Templeton. While I'm here to appeal the decision of the interim, my my claim was denied due to I mean, the invoice, the statement date is seven twenty nine, twenty twenty five, which is in this fiscal year. It doesn't make any sense, the reasoning behind the decision. Effectively, my philosophy is this, if you're picking and choosing which co pays get reimbursed and which ones don't, I would advocate the board's decision to effectively end the program. It needs to be fairness for all employees or former employees. So I want to appeal the decision of the interim to the select board for their next business meeting. I will submit the to the chair the bill that clearly shows the invoice date of seven twenty nine, twenty twenty five within this fiscal year. If this is a a program that's offered to town employees, and I feel like the decision didn't make much sense to me. My wife went in for a medical procedure, but I still had insurance. I had no control over the invoice when it was gonna come. It came in this fiscal year. I asked the board to seriously consider honoring to pay the bill that we offer to town employees. And I thank you for the time to listen to me. I had to take some time out of my work schedule to come down here today. So, I mean, I'm not gonna be pushing that, but I would like the board to consider making a decision on that and honoring what we do for all town employees, not picking and choosing which ones get co pays, I think it's a discriminatory practice, if that's the case, that's taken place. So, Mister Chairman, I want to thank you for your time, if you could kindly consider putting on your next agenda, I could be here to speak on that matter. Thank you for your time and thank you for the work you're doing on behalf of the town of Temple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Do have one quick item. I do have one quick item. Always saddens me, I don't know if anybody saw it, I know the senior center put some information out today. On August tenth, we lost one of the town seniors, Claudette Exposito, formerly Greeno, eighty four years of age, she passed on August tenth, I understand calling hours are in Townsend at the Anderson Funeral Home tomorrow evening, four to seven P M. If I could ask everybody, please join me in a moment of silent prayer meditation and thoughts for the family. Thank you for that, I know she was a fixture at our senior center and is will be deeply missed by all.
Thanks, Mister.
Yeah, I just wanted to give an up update on the website progress. They are delayed, they have, they're doing everyone's website all at once, so things are taking longer than they thought. We're about seventy percent complete, a lot of the content is being migrated over. And right now, it's delayed till September sixteenth for the actual new website to be ready and up. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, on the new business, first item, introduction of new employee administrative assistant and select board office.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce Deb Reed, she's at the end of the table here with us. We have, I had reached out to Appleseed Personnel to have her work with us until we get the new town administrator in here and go back to our other jobs, keep us covered.
So she's through a town agency?
Yes, yeah.
Times that have worked to go through the payroll or does it like a bill?
We do time cards and then they bill us and then we'll pay that every week.
The next item on the agenda is to point two people to the planning board, there was a failure to elect. So, under Mastin Law, chapter forty one, section eleven. There's actually two ways to do it. Mastin Law, chapter forty one, section ten.
Okay, hang on.
Done. There is a, you can have a special election, but it's kind of it's an available option, but you didn't get anybody the first one, so so under section eleven. When there's a vacancy in a board, excuse me. It can be filled with the select board and whatever available members there are of that body. So. Do you have?
Kirk is on the line.
Kirk is on the line.
Charlie is in person, he can call the planning board.
So if you would do that.
Sure.
So open. Yes, I actually, the planning board meeting at six forty five.
No, we have second and second.
Alright. Follows the paper.
You have to do a roll call, he's on the phone.
Yep. Dennis?
Yes.
Kirk said yes.
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you. So with that done, we have two members, Mike Caruso. He has been on the planning board in the past and Mister Adam Little. Interesting background. So does anyone on the board have any issues?
Who votes first, then we're off.
Let's flip the coin.
So if there are any issues. Thank you, Lord, how would you vote?
Sure, am I voting or am I making a motion to?
Yeah.
I've, at this point, at this time, I would actually in motion to approve the two pointees. I'll second that. Dennis? And I also vote yes.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, our planning board. Anyone on the select board have any issues, any questions? No.
I'm making, oh, do I make a motion now to accept it for the select board, both members? Nope, we don't do it.
We go with their motion and it's just a combined vote.
Okay.
It'll be recorded as five and eight, it'll be eight total votes. So planning board, vote, go ahead, vote first.
So, I vote yes. Dennis? And Kirk?
Yes.
Yes.
Turn it up, I'm sorry, he did say.
It's on speaker, that's on speaker. He's always loud.
Mister May, how would you vote?
Yes.
Mister Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes. Yes.
That's all, and I vote yes.
Thank you, Kirk. All set. Bye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Have a nice night, work your own stuff.
No, so I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Yeah, I vote yes, Dennis, and and yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
There, Jerry. Now we have fiscal twenty five, fourth quarter reports, development, services. Ms. Whita.
Hi, good, how are you? Well, I always ask this question. You just want highlights or how would you like me to do this? Have you all had an opportunity today?
And since the rest of the board, would you have details?
Highlights is fun with me, I read it.
Fine with me, yep. I did go through it as usual, very comprehensive report from the city department.
If you'd like to see them be shorter, let me know.
I think anybody that's that's watching might want to know the details.
I can give, I can give an overview. Like, I'll give you the highlights. So during the last quarter. The first thing I'll highlight is we received an open meeting law complaint against Lori Whita for an email dated twenty twenty two. It wasn't actually filed properly, I did have it disseminated at one of our meetings and I put the information in our file, but it was never filed with the clerk and I don't believe it was ever filed with the A G's office. So there's that. We did do another Earth Day cleanup event, we got the Otter River Pool completely cleaned up and that's in large part to equipment and help from highway and water and light and other members of our town hall. We also cleaned up one of the abandoned properties which had a ton of trash in the yard. We got it cleaned up outside at six seventy seven Patriots Road. It is one of the houses that the town took through tax title, so if it ever has the opportunity to go up for auction, the outside is completely cleaned. Communicable disease, as you know from reading my reports, they have kind of suspended reporting on COVID for right now. We have had no cases of measles and we're good so far with triple E and West Nile virus. The building commissioner had eighty seven building permits in the fourth quarter. It was a value of two million eight hundred and eighty four thousand three hundred and forty six dollars, fees collected were thirty eight thousand four thirty eight. There were three occupancy certificates issued. There were twenty nine certificates of completion issued. There were thirty one electrical permits, fees totaling five thousand four eighty. Nine plumbing permits totaling one thousand six hundred dollars in fees. Gas permits worth three, total five hundred dollars. My department, we closed for a short period of time on June tenth for the groundbreaking ceremony that was held at the Baldwinville Elementary School. We are working very well with Callahan Incorporated, who is the general contractor and construction company for the project. I should also mention that thank you for everybody who has been so patient and helpful. We went through a little bit of turmoil, Daryl Sweeney, our electrical inspector, had a horrible accident while working in Gardner. I am happy to say that we have heard that he is home. So
standing.
It it's going the right way. The ag commission, the meeting of April seventh was canceled, the meeting of June second. We talked about farm shares, provided information to residents about farm shares, the farmer's market was discussed and information was placed on the town website and T C T V. The Z B A received and processed a request from ninety four Cross Road. At this time during this, we had to continue it, there were no representatives that appeared before the board and we were missing a survey. So you'll get the rest of the report next quarter. Planning board. Open meeting law complaint for Kirk Machete, we've worked that out, the planning board chair. It was disseminated at the April twenty ninth meeting, the resolution was for open meeting law training, it was completed and accepted by the complainant. Stephen Anderson, who was appointed to the planning board, withdrew his interest due to other commitments, his life was definitely full. Sorry. We actually, at the meeting of four twenty nine, members reviewed three citizens petitions and the flood plain bylaw update. The members at that time recommended no on citizens petitions due to conflicting with the current zoning bylaws. And members recommended the support to the flood plain bylaw. And that was backed by D C R in the state, it was a general update. Conservation. So our conservation agent attended six meetings slash events trainings to keep up her designation as conservation agent. There were fifteen site walks. There were a total of eight permits issued during the quarter. There was an R D A for there was a request for determination of applicability for sixty eight Rainbow Drive. There were one, two, three, four, four notices of intent, one for sixty six Rainbow, one for seventy South Main and one for the Otter River Dam rehabilitation project at fifty one Main Street. There was no forest cutting plans, no minor modification requests, there was a violation letter issued to seventy one Otter River Road. And there was an enforcement order issued to two eighty State Road that was lifted. And there was a certificate of completion issued for two eighty State Road, so that's a closed deal. With the Board of Health, we had seven Title Five inspections, it resulted in five passing. One failed, perk test was completed for an update system. And one that needed a well test in order to pass and that it did. We did five perk tests. We had multiple nuisance complaints, chainsaws, roosters, dogs. Food inspections were completed at Blue and Field concession stand, Izzy's Ice Cream and Pizza Diablo. We processed a two bedroom deed restriction for fifty five short drive for an addition that they were putting on the house. Quick explanation, septic systems are made for a certain number of bedrooms, if they do an addition and it includes a bedroom, then they have to update their system. We did the pool inspection at Peaceful Pines and again worked with D P W Light Water and town hall for Earth Day cleanup. Community preservation held three meetings, processed their articles for town meeting and were approved on all of those. And that's it. Except for the conference conservation seat at C P C. I'm sorry, recreation seat remains open. Listen, you can see. I know, I do a lousy job at reporting. First, then go.
Any questions at the board?
The, do we have a place where the residents could go and know what trucks have been permitted through the town, so they know which ones are the ones that should be out there?
Mobile food trucks?
Yeah, like a place where people can go and.
Sure, I can actually put a list together and give it to the select board office to put on the website and I can have T C T V post it too. Otherwise, they can call my office if anybody has questions.
And and I know that some of them come through you, but the ones that are prepackaged food, they're supposed to go through for quarries and things to the police?
So I'm actually working on that because quarries can be actually done through the select board office. So we can make it part of our packet.
Package, okay, and those would be included in the, that would be wonderful, that way people know.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Welcome. No?
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Have a wonderful night.
I'm going, thank you.
Excellent, may the quarterly report on public safety, Police Department.
Chief, do you want to go first? There's not a name, I don't want to step in front of the chief, so.
He wants to be watched.
Well, listen, I'll, I'll step in line.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Fourth quarter for the fire department. The total of three hundred and sixty eight emergency calls and forty eight residential and commercial inspections, both those numbers are down a little bit from the same time, fourth quarter from the previous year. When you see a breakdown of the calls below that. Are there any questions?
I do have a thing about about the number of calls. EMS is no surprise, it's. EMS is no surprise, it's always up there. Where do we stand as far as staffing the ambulance? Do we have, have we gotten to the point where we have full-time people all shifts, seven days a week?
So we are twenty-four, seven coverage. Our shifts have two firefighter paramedics on them except for two days a week on Monday and Fridays. The full-time staff get what's called the Kelly Day to balance out their schedule for correct hours. On those days, one of those persons are off. So I always have the one firefighter paramedic on the open shift. Sometimes I only get an EMT to cover that shift. Sometimes I do get a second paramedic on that shift. And on the occasion with a vacation or something with the union contract, I don't have the ability to force people on that. So sometimes we get a little imbalance. But the design of the amount of employees we have, we have six full-time firefighter paramedics to on a shift is to cover twenty-four, seven.
So we're not really staffed the way it should be. So you wouldn't have the issue that you just explained.
Correct, if we had, if we were able to put one more full-timer on a shift and then I can negotiate with them minimum staffing, we'd be able to maintain two full-time firefighter paramedics on a shift at a time. And we do our best trying to get qualified people to work part-time and on-call. They just, they're not always, you know, we get some people that make the shifts and some that don't last that long and go the way because they're busy elsewhere and don't can't find the time they thought they could for us.
Anyone else at the board?
Mr. Trent, is that right?
They just had a question regarding the numbers here. Because I've been looking at this pretty consistently and it seems as though the EMS comes in at about eighty percent of the calls per month, pretty consistent. How does that relate to the time involved with the department? Would you say that eighty percent of your time is taken by the EMS calls also?
No. So yes, seventy-five, eighty percent of our calls are EMS-based. But on a daily basis, what our department does is more than just the calls. We're, we're in the school systems with the kids. We're doing the inspections. The employees and myself are maintaining the equipment in the stations. And when you break down all the other duties, we are probably, we're not at a fifty fifty ratio, we're probably at about a sixty-five percent EMS to fifty-five percent fire when you break down all the other duties that go on behind the scenes.
Okay, and you did need sixty-five percent, thirty-five percent, right?
I'm sorry.
No, I just
Yes.
It does numbers on me when you do that.
Always try for better than a hundred percent, so that's what I was hoping.
Yeah, okay, yeah, good idea, right, good idea. That was a really good answer.
I gotta write that down.
Really was. Yeah, Joe, we're gonna hear that as an extra quote. But thank you, that's basically all I wanted to know for now, appreciate it.
Oh, it was Weekly Report, we don't see from fire either. Sorry.
So my weekly report, I am not a hundred percent. Of the time, I admit, I am probably about eighty to ninety percent of the time now. There has been a few times in the past that I let the Selectman's Office know that I was busy out of the office and not able to do a report. But then it just, the report shows nothing submitted, so it has been, but I am trying to get better at it and when the weekly reports were suspended for a while, then they came back. It was trying to get in my, my routine. I have a routine. So my reports, when I give them, aren't for the current week, it's for the week before because I can give you a current snapshot of that week that happened. If I do it for the week that we're in the middle of, you're only going to get a two or three day report. So my, what I try to do is I try to come in on Monday and I review all my calls on Monday and generate my reports. And if something happened that gets me out of that routine, it's, I gotta get back into it because there's been one or two that have messed with I'm trying to get my, myself back in that habit.
Yeah, well, now the residents know if they watch. Perfect, thanks.
Anyone else? Just, I got one more thing. Where are we with all the trucks that are sitting way in the back?
Those are, yeah, they're from the state forestry. And just like every other department that has them, we, we can't sell them. We can't get rid of them. And every time I contact the state fire warden two, three times a year when I don't see her at meetings besides, and we get the runaround, we can't do anything with them. And every time they get the program, somebody in the seat to get the program running again, they leave and then they have to wait to get someone else and get the program running again. I am constantly communicating with her, trying to get it. I've asked permission to put them up in the auction so that we can get rid of them, even if we have to keep the money separate to get back to them. And all the trucks we have are of the age that they don't care about. But I cannot get that permission to, to get them gone.
All of those trucks over there came from that one program?
Yeah. Trying to.
Tell me that, thank you.
You.
I'll let him go first. Board, good evening, Sergeant Fless, the Police Department. We are not at a hundred and ten percent with our weekly reports. As far as questions go, if I can't answer it, I would say we just have to refer to Chief Bennett on this. I have his report right here on the back page of it. It goes over our calls for service. I don't know if you guys want me to go over that or not. I don't know if you guys have copy. But our calls for service for the people that are home at home. Arrests are seven, assist other agency is forty-two. Incidents or investigations is eighty-one, restraining orders is four, parking tickets is five, motor vehicle citations is sixty-seven, motor vehicle accidents twenty-three, FID LTCs that were issued is seventy-three. Total calls into dispatch was fifty-seven hundred and thirty calls. Total calls for police service were thirty-seven hundred and fifty-seven calls as far as activity in the Police Department. Questions on that page that I can't answer?
Good to see the restraining orders down.
Yeah, we, those are tough. Yes, we are too, sure.
I have a question relating to the incidents and investigations.
Yep.
And, you know, it's not a tough question, but I don't think anyway. But it said ninety-three in the third quarter and eighty-one in the fourth. Are those continuing and that's what's left or is that all new?
Those are all new.
Thank you.
As soon as you open up an incident, it stays open and you can't reopen that, so those are all new.
I didn't know it just carried through and they were just ongoing, you know. Okay, thank you.
Fourth quarter fiscal year twenty-five has come and gone. We now enter fiscal year twenty-six. Not exactly sure how the fiscal year will go based on the approved budget. Hopefully, we can make it through the fiscal year without having to make major cuts to services we provide to the community. But rest assured, there will be some noticeable cuts to services. Any questions on that part that I can answer? Probably not.
No.
Our station update during the last couple of months fiscal, final months of fiscal year twenty-five, we were able to accomplish several projects around the station using the ARPA funds. First, the flooring on the main level of the station has been replaced, placed to new rubber flooring. If you haven't seen it, come in and see it, it looks wonderful. It's, it was needed, so it was great. Second, the driveway parking lot of the station was sealed, coated to protect the pavement and that'll extend the shelf life. Finally, we were able to replace and upgrade the aged ninety series Kenwood Dual Band radios. And we also upgraded the dispatch consoles. Any questions on that stuff?
That through the nine one one grant or was that through the ARPA?
All of that was through the ARPA stuff, yep. Our cruiser fleet information, we're still waiting for the cruiser that was approved in December from the ARPA funds. I did have a conversation with the gentleman on that this week. I'm hoping to pick it up next week, fingers crossed. And we're hoping to have it in service in like three weeks. So, and as soon as we do that and as soon as that car is in service, we will decommission the oldest cruiser in the fleet. And the chief wants to point out the newly adopted cruiser maintenance program has shown a savings in our repair costs. So. In department news, our newest full-time officer will be graduating the academy this Friday, August fifteenth. She will begin the FDO program later within the month or so, we will hope to slide her into the schedule. Post C has started recertification process of all officers with the last names beginning A to H. And then finally, we will continue to do our best to provide basic services to the community within our approved fiscal year twenty-six budget. But the town needs to start the informational process for the proposition override two and a half. Now for the department where it will face major cuts in fiscal year twenty-seven. And I'm sure I cannot answer any of those questions. Do you have any questions that I could answer?
Is it, can't or doesn't want to?
I'm not sure if that's a hundred and ten percent of facts, right, yeah.
You just leave that on the table.
I do have a question, have you been seeing a lot in your department upswing in adolescent misbehavior?
Well, it's the end of summer, we always do. We're glad the school's starting.
Yeah. Do you guys have any plans, like some education throughout the coming year on some of
We always try to do that through the school system, right?
Well, the older ones with some safety issues, a lot of safety stuff that I've noticed.
Up at Gilman?
No, I've been noticing everywhere, everywhere, even east, in Templeton, everywhere. And I was just wondering because there's a lot, it's, it's a lot going on within not just ours, but everywhere. And, and it's really concerning, I mean.
So we have a couple of guys, me being one of them at the school, if there's stuff that you'd like covered, I mean, we can do that.
Yeah, it's just, I know, I noticed that.
So I will say that usually when we have a program at the school and we want parents to show up, I don't want to say they don't, but very few people show up, right? And sometimes the people that we want to show up, we don't get there. So we do run them during the year, know the DA's office comes in and speaks to the kids, so.
I know in prime time you do the, you know, speeding and the phones and the stuff like that. But we have that middle school age and there's a lot of stuff happening in that age bracket where
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what concerns me. We've, our community has lost a lot of older and I feel like if we started in that bracket, it might, you know, speed could factor into a car later on, so, yeah.
We will listen to suggestions.
Yes.
I, I agree with Candace. There, there are kids with EV bikes and they don't follow the rules or they don't know the rules of the road. You know, and they should not be driving around full parking lots of busy business.
So I don't disagree with that and I don't know if we won't have discussion or not. I've had discussions.
With phones and
Yeah.
Not looking either, there's a lot of it.
Yeah, off topic, but, yeah.
I have a question about the cruiser fleets, the, the ARPA funds, does that cover a hundred percent of the cruisers?
So that was a, I don't know if you want to answer that question.
That was money set aside to purchase increasing, so it's one time.
For one time.
It's one and done, a hundred percent paying for the cruiser.
Yep.
But what's the oldest cruiser in the fleet right now?
A two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen?
Yep. Been a great car.
It's, it was a good thing it started because they used to have some stuff. Wondered why, I made it crack once that they have to have twelve cars because go out on patrol and breaks down, you go get another one.
We've had arrests in the back, the cars broke down way back in the day. What we're doing now works. And it's been really good, I mean, we've been
We gave our last car to CERT. And it's great for us.
Yeah, so it's really been good.
The Police Department, did you guys just buy a four wheeler recently?
We did not, not that I know of.
That's EP.
Yeah, no, not us.
Okay, all right.
Anything else?
We're still
The forty-two, I'll call them mutual aid, I don't know what to call them. What, what communities or what
So that can be anywhere, that could be Phillips and that could be even the Board of Health. Could be the Fire Department. So it could be anyone. Yep. Winston and Phillipsen. Anything else? Thanks for having me. I'll wait for you.
Okay. I won't allow.
All right.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Rich. May, well, April, May, and June. Wasn't too bad this quarter, so that, that helped getting back and not being too busy, really helped. I did contact Jeff LaGrose several times actually during the quarter. He was supposed to set up a meeting in May, never happened. He was busy. And in turn, when I got back, I was busy, so that never happened. It ended up after July first, so, but we did have one and it was the last meeting. I was kind of hoping this project would be done for the Hazard mitigation plan update, but they have until January to get it done, so. And right now, there is no more meeting scheduled for the work group that was doing this with the department heads and whatnot. They're putting everything together and I think the next step is in front of you. I'm not sure, but we'll, we'll find out. It was nine of us from Emergency Management CERT that attended Renee Lake Gag Laertes Celebration of Life. It was held in Athol, it was over a hundred people there, it was, was a good send-off. We've been corresponding with NEMA constantly, local coordinator mostly. We worked with Holly on getting kids sixteen years of age and older to join CERT. We've got two seventeen-year-olds. And they're on a program status where they don't get called out for emergency if they get called out for meetings and trainings. So until they turn eighteen, I'm gonna hold that for a while, so. We took our two light towers, as we usually do every year, to Mount Waukesha Community College for the Cancer Walk, really for life. That's what we do as a town for them. I attended a CM-DART meeting via Zoom, that's the Central Mass Disaster Animal Rescue Team. We have a memorandum of understanding with them, plus we have a cache of supplies in case anybody needs a shelter for animals setup, we have that here. So I figured I'd better attend a meeting here and there just to make myself visible to them. We've been working on this trailer for this infectious disease trailer from Homeland Security for, wow, I think I put in for it two years ago. And I got a call, I want to say it was in March, asking if we were still interested and I said yes. So it wasn't until May that they sent me paperwork to get the trailer registered. I don't know how Bob did it, but it took some time. It didn't get done until this month. But the paperwork they sent to me looks like the title is still belongs to the trailer company. I, I don't know how he did this, but he managed to get it done. So we do have the trailer, it's, it's at the Station One in Teva Center. It is not set up correctly right now, it's still all in boxes and the way it was when they got it. But we'll work on that. I held a meeting with the EMDs and the CERT officers for, mainly for reorganization. Mike Dixon's been our CERT Director for I, Mike Dixon's been our cert director for quite a number of years. And I had told him when I first took him on as deputy EMD that, uh, that wouldn't last forever, and it almost did, but, um, I figured it was time to let cert kind of handle itself. We still, we're still the program coordinators, so we're still over it. Um, but let them handle themselves. And, uh, so we we took on some new cert officers, so to speak, and they're actually doing really well. They put in some, uh, nice Facebook ads to try and get more people in. Uh, four new people showed up at our meeting on Monday. So, uh, seems to be working alright. Uh, we did the organization of the emergency managers rehab truck. We we had bought new equipment, so that equipment had to be, we had to train on it, and we had to uh, get it put in the truck. We started work on T-va six, which is the old police cruiser that we got last fall. Um, and it just got painted, so it's 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 out here now. It's, it doesn't take me an hour to get across town anymore. When it was, uh, looking too much like a police car, it couldn't get anywhere very fast, so. But it's it's working good, it it runs great. We took the light bar off of it, painted it gray, and, uh, yeah, it's it's gonna work out good for us. And I I have down here working on reimbursement package for the twenty-four EMPG that was actually turned in, the reimbursement was turned in in early May, so it was turned in plenty of time, it had to be in by June thirtieth, thirty-first, or whatever. For cert activities, we were busy in May especially, um, we were at the gap program at the school. And then we assisted with the elementary school Memorial Day program, the Memorial Day Parade, the high school graduation. And then we, the cert team did activate a cooling center for two days, June twenty-third, twenty-fourth. And they held all three of their meetings during that period. The message boards were used by the clerk for two different, uh, incidences, direct department for swim lessons. DPW had a large use of it for Royalston Road. Um, I used one board for cooling center when he was using Royalston Road. And Royalston has, still has our old message board. Uh, we won't let out the new ones, just so you know that, um. Anything that's bought by Homeland Security, we have to let out if we're not using it. So the old one can go anytime it wants to, but the new ones are, uh, programmable by phone and by computer, and we don't let those out. Those were bought during COVID. And we also used it for the DPW's town auction. And that's it.
Questions for Rich?
Not really questions. I just wanted to say that, um, in my experience with, um, some of the cert, the younger team that you have, they are excellent. In my experience, they were at the Senior Center for the ten, um, universe, ten-year anniversary, and they did excellent job.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they they, uh, I've got a good, good group right now, what's, I need more though. We're working on it.
Yeah.
That is it.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Next up is donation for the Senior Center. Again, this is that's appreciated. I contribute for Miss Anne Belant, a hundred dollars, and David Moore owes a hundred dollars. So entertain a motion.
I like to, I like to to appropriate the donation to the Senior Center for the amount presented.
Second.
Question made and seconded and any discussion?
Just a thank you.
Hearing none, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And yes.
And thank you for the donation. Absolutely.
Next is town property use permit for the Motopalooza Narragansett Historical Society.
I just like the same Motopalooza. Right, Motopalooza, yeah, definitely just eight.
Hey, guys, doing?
Hey, Brian.
Good.
How are you?
Yeah.
Anyway, current president of the Narragansett Historical Society, if you don't know. You don't watch Templeton TV. Any questions on Motopalooza? You have a submitted permit. Um, I talked to the cert team, they're under your guide, so they, one of them, Alex replied that he would have, uh, Mike Dixon keep an eye on it, and if they needed any help, they would offer it. Plan is the same as it's been for the last ten years. Um, minus COVID year, we didn't do one. But everything else went smooth. It's always been a good event for us, and most of the car clubs always say that that's the best car show of the year.
Mr. Chair? Any questions, Mr. May?
Um, yeah, the, I have no issue with Motopalooza. The issue that I have is we have no authority over this. Um, because we gave that to Parks and Rec when we created them because they have jurisdiction over parks according to state law.
This is the town common, though.
Right, the town common is a park by state law.
It's still under the select board for this policy, as far as I know.
Yeah, it can't be, not as far as I know, because in state law, when we turn, when we created Parks and Rec under chapter forty-five, I believe, um.
Chapter forty-five, section one, public parks, playgrounds, public domain. In this chapter, town shall not include a city. In this chapter, park shall include a city or town common dedicated to the use of the public. Appropriated such use without interruption for a period of twenty years.
When was that done?
It's, uh.
Years ago?
It's, it's not your problem, it is our problem, because it is a mess that has been brought up in the past, and we failed to deal with it. Again, I'd.
Sorry to bring it up, but that's not your issue.
Is is valid, it's, uh, even in the, in in the policy, the town use policy, it cites, uh, that's been the law, chapter forty-one, section twenty-three A, uh, which talks about town selection, uh, town meeting, appointing a town administrator. The town never voted on that section nineteen ninety-eight, they voted twenty-three C, which is a town coordinator or executive secretary to work for the board of the selectmen. Again, this is a a mess that needs to be dealt with, and I hope to deal with it through the board, uh, sooner rather than later, hopefully, uh, before New Year's.
So the permit sadly, I know, it's got nothing to do with anything.
It's not your problem.
That's fine, we're gonna do it anyway.
I just, Chair, I just wanted to let you know that it is on on Parks and Rec's next, um, meeting, because there was a letter that was written to the select board in February about the issue, so, but right now, it's currently, it's technically under the jurisdiction of the select board, because they would have to vote it into play. Um, as far as I, um, I've seen the deed, so.
Okay, so what would you like me to do going forward? Just have a fun time?
No, I would like to make a motion to, um, to accept your, um, application. I don't know the exact wording, but, um, yeah, because we have to, I think the select board uh, needs to take a vote, and, um, based on the, um, yeah. So I'd like to, uh, I'd like to move to approv- approve the town property use permit for the historical society's annual Motopalooza. Um, so they can have their event, um, but moving forward, I would like to see if it was possible to put the issue on, um, a select board agenda. Um, the park issue.
Next year, I'll be talking to the park.
Probably, most likely.
Just so I know.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna be involved.
Yeah.
Then we have a second. On a motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Abstain.
Mr. Toth?
No.
Ms. Graves?
I'll say yes.
Ms. Bassel?
I'll say yes, as well.
Want to flip a coin? Yes.
I don't want to hold up your event.
Again, it's.
Yeah.
It's not your issue. I don't want to punish the group or the residents for.
Alright.
I've been working on it.
Your government.
I do agree, though, it doesn't.
Thanks, sir.
Alright.
You are all set.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Have a good event.
Thanks. Welcome and welcome.
Next, enjoy. Next item. Actually, if the board has no issues with this, I would like to grab an individual here. Uh, this is not on the agenda, it doesn't, unless the board has an issue with it, it will be put on an agenda in the future. I am looking for, it is the discharge of a mortgage. It's past the fifteen-year timeframe where the town wins money. If you, the house changes, hands you sell it, so before the fifteen years is up, that that, then it becomes a decision of the board whether we take the money or we waive the fee. This item is, came up, it's time sensitive, someone passed away, it's past the fifteen years, nobody owes the town any money or nothing. Then the lien just needs to be signed and cleared, which, uh, I will sign, uh, unless anybody on the board has an issue with it.
I just wanted to say that maybe in the future, um, this would be something, if it wasn't on the agenda, that during the timeframe where it says, um, comments, but the town administrator, um, they could have brought it together, and it could have happened in that fashion. This, this is thought, it's just a thought.
So, Mr. Chair?
Something added like that.
This is a not unusual occurrence. These are the CBDG funded loans that we do not get a routine update on when these are coming due. A lot of times, we find out way after the fact, as in this case. Again, this being time sensitive, I don't even believe this needs to come to a full vote. I think we just get a consensus of the board, give you permission as the chair to sign on behalf and discharge this.
If no one has a problem or issue with it, I'm gonna sign it and release it. If you have an issue, we'll put it on an agenda.
No, I'm good. I just, I just think that, like, this kind of last-minute thing, our administrator could have.
So, sir? You're all set. I will sign this, and it'll get to you tomorrow.
Thank you, everyone, very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
I appreciate the.
I just, uh, I didn't want me to wait, though. So the next item is item G, discussion on animal control agreement. Ms. Bassel?
So there's been, uh, multiple multiple occurrences where the animal control has, um, been called. I've gotten calls from people, you guys all read the email from one of the, uh, citizens in town. Um, where they're not, they're not going by their, the contract agreement, um, and doing on-call. So on the second page, and section I, it says thing on-call between the hours of seven AM and seven PM. Or, yeah, and with the emergency services from seven PM to seven AM, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and providing the town with a telephone number where he or she can be reached as necessary. Adhering to establish on-call protocol procedures adopted by the town, call-out emergencies are a flat rate of fifty dollars until uh, twelve thirty-one, twenty-three, um, beginning uh, one one twenty-four, animal control officers compensated in two-hour increments. Um, but the on-call, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven PM to seven AM. Um, they've just, they've just not been fulfilling their contract. So, you know.
My first thought is, what is an emergency and who makes that decision? That's.
It's not on the contract, and it's not specified.
That's why it's a, in my opinion, this is a bad contract. Uh, it expires June twenty-twenty-six. As we approach the budget decision, in my opinion, that's the time where the board needs to decide if we want to renew this with changes, or do we just have our own animal control standard?
So, you know, they said they respond to emergency calls, and, um, the email that we received from the the town citizen there, it was three black Angus cows that were loose, and I don't know if you're familiar with cows at all. Because Angus aren't exactly the most friendly. There was two adults, two adults and a baby cow. So you got a, a mama cow that's gonna protect her baby when one of the more aggressive breeds, not me, not aggressive, more you know.
I understand.
Well, it becomes a public safety issue, and if they're not gonna respond to a call such as that, you know, you got three cows running loose, but they can't be reached. So what are the taxpayers paying for? What are, what are we?
Taxpayers, in my opinion, are paying for another bad agreement by this board. I I wasn't gonna go into it with with side of, because it's not his mess, but.
It's not. Mr. Chair, I like.
When you talk about an override and you have a regional dispatch agreement that you lower the cost to the other town by twenty thousand dollars, so Templeton residents have to pay more. It's just anything there's, I can go on and on. Is the accounting contract? Templeton Select Board, generally, it just, the history is there. They make bad agreements for the Templeton residents and great agreements for the other towns. I don't get mad at Winston, I don't get mad at Phillipsden, I don't get mad at Hubbard Stent Selectmen for making a good deal for their residents. We, and it's, it's, it's on the website, it's public. Uh, so this, this, uh, animal control agreement again, where does it say, what is an emergency and who decides what an emergency is, really doesn't say. So to me, it's like left up to the person. Yeah, I don't want to take this call, don't want to go into this call. I, I read through it, and I, and I don't see a real mechanism to enforce anything. Uh, again, it's bad agreement, financial-wise, wording-wise, uh, for issues like this.
Breach of contract, though. They're not pulling their end of the contract of the deal, that it's a breach contract.
The, where does it say, who decides if it's an emergency? The animal control say, well, maybe that's not, that's not a real emergency, in my opinion. That's because they didn't put that in the contract.
I have emails saying that they don't have on-call. Now, they do have on-call, according to the contract, they do have on-call. And also, I've talked to somebody that, the cat, in their email, they said if somebody's pet gets run over, this person hit a cat, called dispatch, they said, animal control doesn't have on-call, push the cat to the side of the road. They put the cat in a box, brought it home, put it in the garage for the night.
So.
So they're, they're in breach of contract.
Did you ask for call logs? That's the the start of this, so we could get call logs.
Chair, I just have a, I just have a few things to say. One is, I've been down where the kennel, our property, where the kennel is, and I've never seen it opened, but according to this, it says it shall be open from eight to seven. I've even gotten, um, in my previous life, packages by mistake that were theirs, like a fan, and I had to drop it off, but there was nobody there during this timeframe, and I left it on the porch, because that's what I was directed to do. So that alone, I didn't realize they had, they were supposed to be there Monday through thir- Friday, according to, it says the, the, the kennels' normal business hours shall be from eight AM to seven. Um, there's just, there's a few things, like, they do the hiring of the employee, so is the employee based out of Winch- uh, Winchton area? And would that be, it's like, would they get, do they, are they, like, I like to see, like, if we could get some data on the call logs and Templeton. like, if we could get some data on the call logs and Templeton versus before this is up, for the end of the year, Winchita, and how many times, because if they're living closer that way, are they getting preferences over that way versus our town? Will it be, isn't benefiting our town? I think we need some research. I don't know who we assign this task to, but I think we need to get more data on how it works. You know, cuz I don't see the vehicle a lot in town. So, and I didn't see, I don't see it at the actual, the kennel, you know? I mean, I did talk to the dog that was in the kennel, but nobody was there, so it, it didn't seem happy, but I I just don't know, like, this contract, I agree, is bad. We make bad, I don't know how, why, but it's like notorious, I guess, in this town, but this is bad, and I I mean, we had, our town had a good animal control thing at some point. Um, I had family members that, uh, full disclosure, that volunteered there, so I went there a few times. When we controlled it, it was our animal control. Um, and we had, uh, we, they were out there catching, you know, helping catch a stray dog, or I s- we see more of that activity, and I'm not, I'm not seeing the vehicle in our town, I'm not seeing, I'm not, like, and we're, like, we're doing weekly reports, but, and if they're on with, like, we're not getting any data on that, like, how many calls came in, like, you know, to our town, to our dispatch, where's that data? So, I mean, this is gonna come to the end of the year, we should get more, have more information on some of the facts on our contract to understand, but, um, yeah. There, this, residents are saying that they call and they're being told that we don't have emergency on-call. They are being told that, a few people have told me the same thing. Um, and I, and I didn't even realize it until I had read this, that we did have it. So, um, but what is, what, and it doesn't, I mean, it's not a great contract, because it doesn't, I mean, unless there's another insert that we don't have, that's saying, what is an emergency? You know, and then if you get two of them, their town and our town, you know, who makes the, who flips the coin? To say who gets the service, you know?
We'll see.
What's the difference? I mean, is the person living in, around, more closer to our area? Are they living more closer to there? So if it's twenty-four hours and there's emergency? You know, I know that when the horses had the fire, a lot of people stepped in, but they weren't, like, right there. They were other, you know, residents, I mean, obviously a fire, but yeah, they did come to the scene after, you know, a little bit later. You know, I don't know how long it took them to get there, from wherever the, um, the officer was, the animal control officer was, how long did it get them to, to go to that call? That's a good, that's to how, when they got on site. You know, those are the kind of things, if, you know, how is our town benefiting? I mean, we're paying the truck, we're paying the insurance. We're paying the facility, we're paying electricity and all that stuff, you know? And, and it says that we have at least, like, one person, a couple of people, they get certain monies. I mean, even like the fees, like, if you were to board for ten dollars, like, I mean, I would, residents would have thought they paid more if that happened. I was really shocked, it was, there's a ten dollar fee in here for a twenty-four hour period that they have your yeah, I thought that was kinda like, wow. Yeah.
That's been in the.
Yeah, but I just surprise it's so low.
Yeah, the, the starting point, I think, is the, uh, call logs from both towns, the animal control calls, to see the numbers, and then request, uh, from the department.
Thank you, has a question.
Yes.
Maybe you could request them to come and present their FY twenty-five results. You know, and then that way, we'd be here to ask questions.
Well, they used to give the, the quarter reports, and we don't see them anymore.
So, partially, there was time where I, I needed them, as in, because I had livestock worries. And I was told that they had enough, I had enough help, but they didn't need to show up.
Liz?
So, a couple of things. Um, the, the first thing is looking through the detailed uh, ledger history for the, for this past year. There's a lot of bills in there for vet services. And it, I'm not seeing any place where, where it's being reimbursed. I don't know what, I don't know the details behind it, but it's to various vet veterinary clinics. You know, some of it is, you know, pre- pretty substantial.
Yes.
You know, it's like three hundred and thirty-five dollars for one of them. And, um, the other thing is, they, they have the, the, the vehicle. And is the vehicle seen outside of Templeton and Winchita, and if so? So, that's, those are the.
Seen it going down route two, eighty miles an hour.
I think maybe some fares.
You, you know. I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, there's some bills out here, that it could be for, you know, Templeton animals. And they, and I may not be interpreting said the, the financials correctly, but if I am, you know, are, are we paying just for Templeton, or are we paying for Winchita as well?
I mean, we have a while before it expires, but it's a, we should definitely be, like, who will get us the information and data? Cuz I don't wanna do it.
If you look on page three.
Yeah.
Maintaining the accurate record of the ACO officer activities, providing the police team to designate a monthly report and inform acceptable to the towns, including all necessary paperwork required by the towns, and keeping a detailed record of action taken. Would be another thing to, uh.
I've, I've never seen a report from.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Looking, looking over this, it starts off the municipal agreement. The employees are appointed by the town manager. Winchita has a town manager, we do not. Looking at the amendment, there is a whole scope of service that defines on-call. Going back to the original agreement, though, item K, the town will provide this, a motor vehicle, keep same registered and insured. Town of Winchita's obligation for the vehicle shall be limited to supplying fuel, doing oil change services, vehicle utilized by the ACO in the course of his or her services to the town. Town shall be, the vehicle clearly marked designated as an official animal control vehicle for the towns. Adequacy of the vehicle shall be subject to the determination of the Winchita Police Chief or his designate. The question I have with this, I have seen this vehicle numerous times in the town of Ashburnham, on the east side of Route one forty, down in toward Ashburnham Center. Why is the Templeton, Winchita ACO vehicle in the town of Ashburnham? And I guess that we need to address to the Winchita Police Department and say, what gives? You know, this is not right. Um, I'll, I'll address this further in board member comments, cuz I have something else to bring up that'll tie right back to the vehicle.
That vehicle has been in Ringe, New Hampshire.
Uh, okay. There is a vet in Ringe, New Hampshire, however.
No, not when you're at a shed facility.
Okay.
Okay.
I just like to do the data and find out how it, how, how it breaks out that oh, this was supposed to be for us to, so that we could afford having, it's, you know.
Yeah.
And what is if we're, we're paying, once again, and we could have just paid ourselves and it would have.
It's always, oh, we need more money, we need more service to the residents, service to the residents.
I'm not a big regional.
They're not really getting it, so.
Wouldn't it be beneficial to have our own?
We have everything.
A- as we approach the, uh,
But again.
Budget thing.
With all this being.
The time to make the decision.
Reach a contract, it's not, it's not reaching the contract, it would be done.
I personally, I, I need some data, uh, some information, so then I can.
Can we send them, like a letter, so like the data?
And how come the, the ACO for the town of Templeton isn't included, um, the, the reports, weekly reports? Shouldn't that be included with the police department?
That may be something between the two departments, since they're employees of the town of Winchita. I guess we would need to request, are they reporting to their own department, since they're employees of the Winchita Police Department? Yeah, it's a gray area.
I don't like gray areas.
I don't either.
Is that something moving forward, we should talk to, cuz he's under, they're, these guys work under Chief Bennett as well. Moving forward, is that something we can talk to Chief Bennett about and have them start putting in for the town of Templeton?
Both departments and see who has what records.
No, I mean, weekly reports.
In, in that, though, they're appointed by the town of Winchita.
But the phone calls are coming in through our dispatch.
But, but do they report up there?
Well, we should be getting the same reports as the town of Winchita, then.
Again, it's request the information from, from both towns and see what we end up with. To see the number of calls, who we support into who, where is, if, where is the vehicle actually housed, cuz I flipped through there, I might have missed it, but I don't see a location specific where it, it's, it's housed.
Well, if the, if the, if a phone call comes through the non-emergency line, we don't, we wouldn't get a rundown on that, so some people don't like to call emergency for even an animal, they, they like to call the non-emergency. Even though it's, even if it's a.
Be a record of the activity.
Yeah, there is.
Either in Winchita, or it's in Templeton, or it's both, but, uh.
Because our people would be calling our emergency or non-emergency line.
Well, if they don't have on-call, then it, the vehicle should be not reading, written anywhere, it's not specified.
Where it's housed.
But, again, if they're not doing on-call, the vehicle should be at the facility.
See, cuz it doesn't say.
It doesn't say.
I mean, our, our town has that rule that they're supposed to be parked, I mean, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Hi, Mike. Um, I'm gonna suggest that we put this in our tracker. And that sometime in the next six months, we invite the parties involved to a select board meeting, so that we can ask them directly uh, these questions and get answers directly, um, to them, so that we're not speculating and you know, guessing and, um, interpreting, um, that we actually have the facts in front of us and the people who have the answers, hopefully, to our questions.
It's time to gather data?
Right.
Records, call logs?
And as long as we get that done, in, you know, the next six months, eight months, we'll be ahead of
The contracts, yeah.
Right.
I agree.
That definitely isn't this. Anything else on that? Any else?
Yeah.
Thank you for that, I was. Next item is item H, uh, North Main Street Bridge, Ms. Bassel.
So here's another one, that's, um, I was reading over the, uh, the inspection report and everything that, so the inspection report is done in April ninth, on April ninth, twenty-twenty-five. Um, everything that they have listed, the wearing surface, they have it, um, as a five, which is in fair condition, but uh, defined as a SP, which is, um, the severe major deficiency and priority. Um, so wearing condition, deck condition, curves and wheel guards, just pretty much everything about the bridge, they have it listed as priority. This, it's only gonna be a matter of time for, if the whole thing falls apart, it's not in good condition. I wish we all know that.
Mr. Chair? Could you clarify, this is North Main Street, East Templeton or Main?
It's over the Otter River.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, over the, uh, the Otter River. It's down to they have it down to, um, five beams out of service and five beams that are still in service, and the beams that are in service, again, are, uh, they're in rough condition, um, let's see where they go. They're in severe and priority, um, the girders and then the bridge deck itself. The sidewalks, there's, um, the water main, these was water mains, there's no, um, safety guardrails going onto the bridge. Just everything about it, um, so it's, it's something that needs to be brought up and discussed, I think. It's, uh, certain, and it, just a the whole thing is, um, it's, it's an important part of the bridge, you know, um, emergency services need to be able to use that bridge, they need to be able to utilize it. Um, the school routes, school buses, um, Hooton, Hooton Park. You know, we just, we're getting that, uh, Parks and Rec is getting that up and running. Um, so there's a lot of, uh, emphasis on making sure that bridge is safe for the community.
Cuz everybody knows, everybody.
Everybody. And like I said, we all know that, that it's in rough shape, but I just.
And the dead exclusion to, that would have replaced that bridge, missed by two votes.
Really?
The first time around.
Yeah, and that was for the chapter ninety, yeah, which brings us into that conversation, that discussion. So, as far as the chapter ninety goes, let's see. Took a bunch of notes. Yeah, starting out to identify and document, which the inspection does, uh, the engineering reports and stuff like that, estimates for the, the final costs, now that we have now that we have, um, or, no.
The design done?
Thinking.
No, uh, sorry, mind blank. Now that we have somebody that's doing the finances. An accountant, thank you, thank you, mind blank, now that we have an accountant, maybe this is something that we could focus on, work on, and start getting a, a report, an estimate together for it. Um, be able to demonstrate the bridge, you know, how critical the bridge is to the community. See, safety concerns. All safety concerns, um. So, the chapter ninety is three hundred and eighty million dollars, that's right now.
And the last estimate they had on the bridge, it started at about two point four.
As it stands right now, it's, it's probably looking more like replacement rather than what we have.
For probably approaching fifteen million dollars. I do.
And like I said, looking at the report, the shape that the bridge is in right now, I think you're beyond rehabbing it, it's a complete bridge replacement at this point. You can do beam and repairs, fix the back wall, I mean, but that's gonna cost more money than.
There was the bridge and there was the water main that is on top of it, that the, the water commissioners said that they, if they bridge replaced, they would go.
Yeah, we need the sidewalk.
But, um.
Um, so, besides just the chapter ninety, there's the mass info, uh, mass works infrastructure program, which is something that we don't have a grant writer anymore, but hopefully that position could be filled. Um, but the that's the grants for the Republican infrastructure improvements, including bridges, which might be an avenue that we could look at. There's the bipartisan infrastructure law, which is a federal law that offers significant funding for state and local infrastructure projects. Um, there's a bunch of different avenues that we can look through, instead of just going straight to the chapter ninety. And the chapter ninety, if we did have to go that route, you know, that we could look at, um, and see. We could look at, let's uh, different, uh, bands, bond anticipation notes. Or we could, uh, possibly commercial loan from a bank. Just different ways that we can go around, that we can get to where we need to be in order to get that bridge fixed.
Well, if we don't fix the bridge, it's gonna put, once it goes down, it's gonna put pressure on the other bridges, and they're not in great shape either, so it's not gonna be great for our town, so. We definitely have to address the bridge, but. um, I think that, I don't know where, like, I don't know how there's like a list, but I don't know, we've asked to be looked at by our representatives, and they've come in and talked to us a few times about it, and it just doesn't seem like we're high up on the list.
So those things. The the squeaking will gets the grease, and I don't think that sitting back and just waiting for them to push it up the list is gonna help anything.
Yeah, I don't.
If we keep pushing forward with it, eventually they're gonna get sick of us and be like, okay, fine, here's the, hopefully. So with the bands, with the the bond anticipation note, that is part of the chapter ninety, um, in order to get approved for for that, you need the the chapter ninety approval, you need um, you need to present the planning, the financial analysis, you need approval and the insurance and and you'd have to receive and show how how you're managing the funds. Now, I don't know, do we have a municipal financial advisor?
We do.
We do, it was that something that we could possibly talk to them about?
It could be, the question could be presented.
There's a lot of different avenues that we can go down, instead of just sitting back and just waiting. I mean, the MMA, I know they have a lot of resources, as far as networking, capital improvement and sitting back, maybe we sit down and just write out a a capital um, improvement plan.
Whoa, 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 don't.
I wanna be using that word.
But again, it's something that we need to think about, because this isn't the only bridge in town, you know, and and they're not all the salt and everything, they're not getting any any better, just sitting.
It's true, well, as you pointed out, Lisa, and that's the one thing that, you know, you made me think of here, that that, when this bridge was first brought to us, I think it was in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, in that area. There was a lot of co-discussion relating to Hamlet Mill Bridge, that that bridge was in poor shape. And that, how long would it be after Main Street Bridge that would have to do that one because it would fall apart? And my concern is that if Main Street Bridge does get shut down, you know, blocked, whatever the case may be, then if the trucks that go down that road are allowed to go over Hamlet, that just is gonna speed up that deterioration all that much quicker. And then we're gonna have two out of commission, and then what do we do, we just move up the road a little bit and go to the next bridge? Yeah, um, you know, uh, so I agree, something needs to be done, and I just think we dropped the ball six years ago. And uh, you know, it's kinda hard to get that back from the taxpayer.
One of the challenges we've had, and we've talked with the legislative team, the fact of our town's de- demographics, you know, eighty, one hundred plus or minus, according to the latest census, seventy five point seven to three road miles, we're small potatoes in the grand scheme. Representative Zlatnik doesn't wanna give us the doom and gloom, but the harsh reality is, when they look at distributing the funds on any of these infrastructure improvements, we are low on the totem pole. He's not saying he won't help us fight it, but we we do fall low. Now, on this, the latest release from Mass uh, Department of Transportation, the um, Highway Division with the chapter ninety apportionment distributions, yeah, it comes out to seven hundred and eighty three thousand ninety four dollars and ninety eight cents. There was a three million dollar apro- apportionment the governor just signed off on within the last two weeks. Six hundred and ten, seven eighty three ninety eight, there was an eighty million dollar apportionment, one seventy two, three fifty six, but that doesn't even start to touch that bridge. And uh, again, population eighty one forty nine, employment, they show one thousand five hundred seventy eight. The road miles, they spell it out, the seventy five point seventy three, Templeton Highway District Two, I mean, the whole chart is very detailed. And you look at some of the other towns, and I hate to say it, but everybody inside the four ninety five loop, it's amazing what they're giving them. And we keep seeing that over and over and over, and like everybody else, I'm tired of it as well. I don't know what is the secret sauce to break that.
And quite frankly, um, I have been told this by people in the know, that no, no fault of their own, when you get west of four ninety five, the reps and the senators, they they just don't carry the horsepower that they do inside the four ninety five. They, every, they get, I think, I take is, they get a little trinket every once in a while, you know, here we give, you know, Templeton three hundred, and we give God and a couple of years, we give this little town this, so they can say they they got something for their constituents. But if you look at the amount of money given to various towns, inside four ninety five, it's don't tell me that's a fair system. Considering the amount of money that you send that way. Their own numbers show in fiscal twenty four, they collected seven hundred million plus in fuel tax. But that three hundred million they're distributing is bonded borrowed money. You're collecting seven hundred million fees that is supposed to go to pay for the roads and bridges, maintaining them and repairing them and replacing them. Where does that money go, and you're borrowing money every year, it's a bond bill. Two thousand fifteen, it was three hundred million. Two thousand sixteen forward, till till now, it's been two hundred million, split up by three hundred and fifty one cities and towns. It's uh, it's it's peanuts, and it's a system that doesn't work, but it's just, you know.
In in May, um, at our advisory pre-town meeting, uh, Representative Zlatnik said there is three million set aside in queue, and we're number thirteen in the district, and maybe in twenty twenty seven or twenty eight. You know, we we could have a chance. But, you know, and that's three million out of six, we still has to come up with some. And Noel Francis said it was shung already for over two years, so we have a design and we're all set, ready to go. Yes?
We we did have a design and we picked, we picked it, but that was a few years ago.
Right, yeah.
Maybe it seems, you know, amended, but like uh, the Pleasant Street Bridge that goes over the railroad, active railroad line in Goddard. Was, took them five, six years to get the money to get that replaced.
Yeah, anyway, yeah.
Yep. It's uh. That had the additional nuance of going over railroad tracks, which adds a whole nother set of hoops to jump through.
But again, it's uh.
But, I mean.
Oh, you're not wrong in bringing it up and wanting to have questions and stuff. It's it's uh, they've been asked and, yeah.
We are just keep on reminding our representative that we are interested in getting our bridge fixed, and we would like to be moved up, please, represent us.
If we can sit down and write it out for him, write him a letter, and I'm sure you guys are, if we do it again, and again, and again, they're gonna look at it and be like.
So again.
Calculate all the mileage that it's gonna take to make a detour from that, but I'll do that, you know, just.
Be in my boat, they'll see your phone number and they'll just.
You never know, though.
The way I see it, it's better than just sitting back and just letting nothing.
Well, then they think you forgot too, so it's better to be a pain than to have them think you forgot, cause maybe they're gonna forget about you. A reasonable timeframe, when you sent it, not too pain, but enough to, yeah, I agree.
Maybe that that how many people don't wanna do, you know, the the tax increase to get the.
No, they don't, they don't want to.
They don't want to, there's other avenues that we can look at in the meantime, you know, so when it does get approved, at least we have a plan set in place. Something that maybe we should all kinda.
If it, oh, we gotta, we should dig out the the plan that we have. I mean, when you're working, usually when you're working on some kind of project, or you want people to, like, you do an advertise, like, you get people, you know, wanting to remember it, you have, you know, you have picked like pictures and things, like in your town hall, like, this is the, this is the plan for the future of that bridge, you know, things like that. Yeah, it's when they, especially when they come in here, like.
Let's do that.
Yeah. Yeah, you come, yeah, they come in here, they come to sit there and tell us whatever, it's, oh, by the way, look at, look at our picture of what we want.
Brady.
That's. Yeah, so thank you for listening, thank you for.
Yeah, thank you for bringing us up.
Good discussion. The last item, school enrollment and housing, Mr. May.
Hello again. Um, I just uh, the the information that I've been getting has been coming in in dribbles because of the vacation, so I just wanted to to make sure that we're getting it all in front of all of us here, um, so we know the whole picture, and just as an example, this here was given to me by Sue Barney, um, it deals with the preschool students. Um, and if you look at the schedule, and you look at the numbers, and as I I sent you last week, I believe, there's a hundred and one staff that are listed in the school on top of the five hundred and eighty five students that were listed in the school, for a total of six hundred and eighty six people in a building that holds six hundred and fifty five. Um, and the way that they're accomplishing this, it appears to be, is simply through this preschool class that they have, you know, day, morning classes, afternoon classes, Tuesday, Thursday classes, and Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes. So that's seemingly how they attempt to, and I don't know how successful they really are, but they attempt to keep it at that six fifty five, which is, you know, twenty six lower than their stated total. So, um, you know, I think this problem is now, I don't think there's a future problem, I think the problem is now, and we need to come up with a solution, whatever that be, and I think the discussion needs to start soon. Um, because, and 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 just a little thing, we were sitting here and Lori was presenting her uh, quarterly report. And she stated that there was two million dollars in building permits or buildings.
Two point eight.
Two point eight, so that's pro- probably five homes.
Eighty seven building permits.
Right, but I'm just saying, the, you know, i- it's, yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, don't know, um, how many, I know there's one in there, um, but uh, um, you know, most homes are three bedrooms. So every home that goes up around here is pretty much, you know, two potential kids to the school. And that's also in Phillipston, with the building that's going on there. Um, so I I really think we're behind the eight ball, because we got BES and I don't know what the scheduled date is now for that, you know, finishing their completion date on it, but I believe it's supposed to be like next year. So that's, you know, just one cycle away, and we could have, you know, another forty five kids here.
Housing going up at the funeral school, five acres Templeton and in Phillipston.
Yeah.
You know what that's gonna be, that's just about guaranteed, more kids for the school and.
Yeah, that's, you know, so we have, you know, and we have so many issues around this, because as been stated over and over again, you know, we, our only legitimate agreement is nineteen seventy seven. Um, we don't have an updated one, we haven't had, you know, say in certain things that we're supposed to have say in. And we're six years into a fifty year building, and because of the way it's been handled, because it was clear when this all started, that Phillipston didn't want to go to Templeton School, and Templeton didn't want Phillipston in Templeton Elementary School, but the minute the school closed, the, or minute that school was built, the district decided to shut down Phillipston's school and move them all to Templeton. And I'm not saying that, you know, that's the 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 solution to this problem, but it's definitely part of the problem that we need to resolve. And we don't have a lot of time, it appears, to resolve the problem, and I think the school needs to take a bigger step in this. Cause I'm kinda disappointed that we're hearing it here, rather than from the school. You know, this should have been brought to us by the school probably last year, um, because they had more kids the year before, from what I've been informed, so when were we gonna, no, when were we gonna be informed, when we need a new building? Um, and, yeah, and that's, you know, we have, we're talking about funding a five million dollar bridge, and and now, you know, you say schools people and people are just gonna, you know, have a nice day, um. So I just think we need to work on this, and I think we need to uh, you know, push some people into a a meeting and get them talking, because there's uh, we can't sit around and just wait for it to fall in place. Um, I think we need some action, and that's my two cents.
And the towns actually could be in the driver's seat with this. You look at the agreement, the teacher's contract on not following the law, uh, the agreement hasn't been done, looked at. You're gonna have, where are you gonna put these kids, they're mandated to be there. They did that up building, they don't back up, but again, maybe the towns get together, we're we're in the driver's seat. Tell them the school district, what's what, instead of. First try it all three together and see what, but it is an issue that's, it's here.
Mm-hmm, oh, it's right in our face now.
It's concerning that the the superintendent, that number, that's a safety issue. And parents should be outraged that they're that close and nobody knows this in this town, because this is not cool.
Temporary solution would be in mobile classroom.
Yes, we have all kinds of room at Templeton Santa School.
They used to have that, they used to have, well, they had in Lunenburg, they had the pods that they put out there, because they didn't have enough space. And they had the, yeah, so, but we don't even have that space there, because we can't even, like, we can't even have a fair in the center.
We'll add another stall.
Keep going up.
I don't know, school.
It's funny, but it's not.
It's not, it's just like there's that built, there's no parking there.
Yeah, you couldn't even put it in any kind of a parking area, cause there isn't one.
Yeah. It's not even a, like, a big playground.
Need the ice cream bar.
There you go.
Yes, so, it where, the school is at capacity, when it goes above it, what is the town's liability and responsibility? Because the tech, because the school was completely located in our town, that it go, it goes over it. You know, goes over the the, the the building inspector or the fire department needs to be going, no, you got too many people in the building, because how long does it take to clear that building if there's a fire?
I mean, they're doing what, fire drills, right?
But do do they meet the requirements, I I don't know if they do or not. Um, so I I think the town has, also has a a safety liability
Absolutely.
to to deal with it, and it's completely owned and operated within our town, so that means the fire department and the building inspector needs to be going, enough, gotta figure something else.
Well, and and even to to Liz's point here, if you look at, you know, they do the active shooter drill. And the active shooter drills, they have them all congregate outside, well, that's stats show that the greatest percent of injuries happen outside the school in an active shooter thing. Stats show that the greatest percent of injuries happen outside the school in an active shooter thing. So where are we gonna put them? Cause there's not enough room in the school. To do it. So right now is my understanding, they have a, the plan is to go to a field up the street. I don't know, but I, you know, I mean, I know if there's an active shooter, I'm just going that way and wherever I end up, that's where I end up, but um. You know.
Five, six-year-old.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, you know, you you. And they they have to have, you know, a place to meet up, they have to have, you know, they gotta go in groups, they gotta do all these things and. You know.
What grade are they into? What gr- what grade is it up to? What's the final number? It's fourth grade, so fifth is still at the uh, middle school. They never brought him back?
Just. Something else to consider, T E S is not an Narragansett Regional School District Building. It is owned by the town, they lease it from us. So all the responsibility is ours. All the liability is ours.
All the like, I mean, and then we have the the buildings that are under. What Narragansett, the ones that are in Ballin. I mean, off of Ballin.
Yep, because years ago, the town gave them away.
And they're pushing their limits.
Mister Chair. Yes, madam. Um, isn't one of the selectmen the liaison to the school department?
We do have one, yes.
Yes, I am the liaison to both school district com- committees, both Narragansett Regional and Wadi Tech. I do not know when they meet. I have not received a letter of notification that I have been. That either committee knows I'm a part of them. That is a problem.
Was the office supposed to notify them? We have a new member.
Well, one would have thought that's how things used to work, but I guess there's been a change.
So should we have our um, Board of Health and our Fire Department look into the occupancy?
Building inspector.
Like we should not notify them that we have a select.
Yeah, we have to, legally, we have to.
Now please advise us of your meetings. It's really urgent.
Is that like just an action thing?
Everybody's on vacation, so emailing out. He has answered, don't come back in a timely fashion.
There is a school committee meeting tomorrow night. I'm not sure, I think it's five thirty, but I'm not sure. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to present it so that everybody had the information so that we were all on the same page. And we shall continue from here.
We already have new business agenda. We have no old business listed. We are at board member comments. Mister May.
Could you come back to me? Sure, I have two and I'll be brief. One of my neighbors reached out to me, they're doing the work on Dudley Road. They started last week taking up the surface and scrabbling it down. Anybody who has not yet traveled it, good luck. The road surface has been dropped two to three inches. Quite a ways down from the center of town. There are a lot of raised structures. I love that sign. Uh, you cannot necessarily straddle them. Some of them are set in such a manner without crossing the center line. It doesn't happen. I noticed on Sunday that the yellow lines had been repainted back. So it was like, huh, what do you do? So I did place a phone call to Mastot. District two. And I got a phone call back from Corey Sajo. It's a contracted state highway repair. Through a grant-funded. And yes, they are aware of what's going on. Yes, they do paint the lines back because that is all part of the performance by the contract. He was able to tell me who the main contractor was, the resurfacing is a couple of subcontractors. Getting back to the original discussion, a citizen who contacted me hit one of the raised structures, popped the tire. My immediate response was, well, you might want to check with the D P W. We have a process and a mechanism in place. They can probably assist you. According to the state, we can actually notify it through the state and go back to the main contractor. They certainly have a mechanism for that. Good news. Now we get the bad news side of it. We're supposed to have a copy of a contract on the D P W that was signed by Mister Zozik and the I T A. But when I went looking on the D P W's page under all of our projects and contracts, lo and behold, I could find nothing. Once again, our town website doesn't appear to be current. That was a little perturbing to me and I'll leave it at that. Second item I have, and I I promised I would get to this when I talked about the. A C O vehicle. I think it's time all of our town vehicles be deemed dubbed and labeled official use only. We install G P S tracking on all vehicles without exception. This board should be able to access in real time. Department heads should be able to access in real time. Where is our fleet at any given moment? So if I happen to be coming home from work and see that vehicle, I can pull over. Quickly look, look into it and say, yep, there it was, right where I saw it. Then I can make the phone call and say, why is my town vehicle out of town? It's a thought, we can talk about it. It's not that expensive to put a tracking system on. We have a number of vehicles in town, already have mobile data terminals installed. When I ran an ambulance service, it was very simple to add the tracking feature to the M D Ts and the onboard mobile gateways. It was one more flip of a switch internally. And you're already paying for that service. So I think it's something, looking at everything else in a cost-saving measure. And then we could also start tracking the fuel usage, everything else, and we could really start drilling down. Every penny's counting. Our budgets are tight. This is a good way to really know where's all of our money going. It's just a thought. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Miss Graves?
I don't really have anything other than I hope people out there behaving themselves and. You know, slowing down, lots of people are speeding lately. Hopefully, yeah, so hopefully people, because some of our roads, you know, rose in other towns too, not so great, so. We could slow down. This is the time of year we. It starts getting worse. With traffic. So, um, but um, yeah, that's about it. I really just want everybody to stay safe and have fun.
Mister Spazo?
For uh, for this board, I think we have our work cut out ahead of us, but I I think it's uh. It's definitely something we can, we can deal with and we can uh. Make some good changes moving forward. I'm excited.
May have some fun now. Alright, um, the two items that I'd like to just bring up here briefly. Um, one of them was brought up tonight in a presentation regarding the. Practice of hand-me-down vehicles. Um, and uh. Yeah, I was gonna say, um. Specifically, I'll go with the police department is just an example. It's not. Putting any weight on them or anything, but with the police department. They came in and the. Arrangement through capital improvement planning, uh, capital improvement plan was. To buy a new cruiser every year. And we have a revolving. Uh, group of six vehicles. That would rotate every six years. And. That would cut down significantly on maintenance repairs because it'd stay on the warranty for a longer period of time. Um, the cars would be in better shape, everything about it would be better. And that worked as it was proposed for a couple of years and then. The town's eyeballs got bigger. And everybody started looking at. Those vehicles and we started. Throwing them to developmental services, to emergency management and to fire and so forth. So basically, all we've done is we've taken those excess maintenance costs from the police department. And shuffled them off to other departments and have saved the town no money. Um, or potentially no money. Um, and I think it's a poor practice and I'd like to see it stop. The other thing is, I got a couple of calls and uh. This is a minor thing and I did not get a chance to get up there before I came in today. Um, but I was told that there's. You know, I was informed by, we have a sign rule, right? Yeah, and uh, then why is there a sign on the bandstand? And. That sounds like a completely legit question to me. Because. You know, when I envisioned and I heard about local signs and signs being allowed and. You know, certain signs they need to come to us for and other signs they need to go that can be approved by the T A, I believe, directly. Um, but. It was never stated they could be put on structures. Um, you know, these were advertising signs stuck in the ground. That was the implication that I always went off of. That's what I heard when this was discussed. And now I heard that there's a banner. On. The town bandstand. And. I don't understand how that falls within the. The guidelines and I don't think. Any particular entity has. More privileges than any other in town to put signs. Up for advertising for services or. Issues. And uh, sorry that that was. Less than articulate, but. I think my point is, has been made that uh. I think we have a problem with the sign law.
Thank you. Couple of things. Is our meeting on the twenty-seventh is the goal-setting meeting. We have already. Discussed and I said that I would put our. Multiple policies on there to discuss them, look at them. There are. Easy changes, I mean, they're just right in your face. We changed their name to uh, the Select Board a few years back, but in the personnel policy. It still has Board of Selectment in a few places, so I mean, it's either gotta be one or the other. Uh, there's some things in the financial management policy. One is, it says excess or unanticipated, we get more state aid than we estimate. It will wash into the overlay. Man. That should roll. Free cash, which will roll into stabilization funds, which one of them is the infrastructure stabilization fund. Now, you're probably not gonna get enough money in there to pay for the replacement of the bridge, but. Potentially you could pay for. The engineering cost. Just thought, so. Next couple of days, uh, think about what you would like, you know. Something for us to work on. That we could either start and get done at that meeting or put it into motion. Because some of these policy things. I don't wanna let them, I don't wanna let it roll down the road and just forget about it. Uh, like, get this done because it's the middle of August, or you know what, it's gonna be January. On a good, on a good note, uh, Town Administrator Screening Committee is meeting tomorrow night. At the senior center. I'm gonna go to the meeting. I am gonna act as the chair until they pick a chair and I'm gonna hand over. Uh, the documents, the resumes and stuff. Nobody would wanna work the Templeton? Sorry, surprise. We have a a number of people. I just print tomorrow, put them in folders. I'm gonna hand them off to the thing. I haven't been reading through the resumes or nothing. Chief Bennett. Said he had, he was getting off the committee, wouldn't be able to serve. So I reached out. To a resident who was going to be on as the school committee rep. But when we met on the thirtieth of July, we didn't hear back from him until the day after. So he's still willing to serve as a resident if. We wanna add, had the five-person committee. So my question to the board is. Any issues with having a s- a special meeting Monday? Here between anyway, picking, the six-thirty, there's Conservation Commission meeting, so if we can meet between five and six, one thing. Appoint the individual. As resident to the screening committee and. I intend to ask them, uh, suggest to them. Uh, and strongly recommend because they have a large number of stuff to look through. To meet next Thursday. And the following Thursday because this needs to get done sooner rather than later. So is everybody, and all we need is a core, we just need three people to, we're doing one thing, that's it. Uh, and appoint this first and I I emailed him, if I would have heard by noontime. I I would have put it on the agenda, but he didn't get back to me. He's out of town on vacation. And he, he got back to me at about four-twenty. So I explained to him. The meeting tomorrow, you know, you would miss it. We'll have a meeting, get appointed, potentially, I said, we could have, I could have. See if we can meet on Monday, appoint you and you can make the next meeting. So if that's agreeable to everyone, I will post the Monday meeting, one agenda. One individual to the T A Screening Committee and. They will have five people. I, four people probably could have did it, but we created five. We have somebody, a re- another resident, so uh.
So you three residents?
If there's, no, and and anybody got an issue with that? Like you said, all we need is a form.
The building's open till six-thirty, so.
No, it's, we we shouldn't be here ten minutes, seriously, if we have longer than that and. Somebody fired me. So uh, no issues with that? Okay, like you said, we, if somebody can't make it, we just need a quorum. About that person on and and uh, and I will. Inform the committee of potential action, just so they know. So that, uh, the T A Screening Committee will be begin tomorrow night. Uh, it's at the senior center. I'm gonna have all the paperwork with them, the motion to go into executive, make sure they get that right and uh. When they do that. I guess I have to go home, so and they will start and that's a a good thing. It just took a while. Uh, to get, catch up with everybody because somebody was out of town, someone was on vacation. Mister Black, he actually had me, he's adjusting his schedule, so he said, I'll adjust my schedule to make that meeting. Cause it was a couple of days notice and he said, well, I had this, but I'll adjust it because that's important, so. That's off to him. And I might have to go to the other river hotel. So that's all I have. Uh, thank you, everybody. That was, uh, it was a pretty good meeting and. Did a lot of good information, so that's, thank you. We definitely didn't solve anything, but.
Discussion was brought up and it's on the table now, so.
He gave us a kick in the backside, a move. So it's always a good thing, so. I will entertain. Wow, it's not even. I gotta have something else to say. I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion being seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussions? All those in favor, say aye. Anybody wanna stay?
Yeah, I'll sleep.